I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always great to have our cadets come and present the colors for us. Moving on to item, Agenda Item 3.01, Approval of the Agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a motion to lay an Agenda item on the table.
All right, can you identify the item, please?
I'd like to lay 9001 and 9002.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to lay Agenda items 9.01 and 9.02 on the table.
Madam Chair, I just want some clarity, make sure it's proper procedure, I don't mind it. Is it proper procedure to lay items on the table during the consent Agenda, approval of Agenda, I mean, approval of Agenda?
My...
I was thinking it would be remove them from the Agenda, which doesn't give us any direction on when to bring them back up or to bring them back up. I just want to make sure it's correct.
And that's why I wanted to lay it on the table during...
My understanding is, is that they can be laid on the table as the items come forward, and they can be removed from the Agenda as we approve the Agenda. That's my understanding, but, but I'm not a total scholar of Robert's Rules.
Yes, our parliamentarian is not present today?
I have to have my handy dandy.
You got your Robert's Rules.
No, I'm at the pleasure of the board. Those items on the Agenda and...
Was it your intention to remove them from the Agenda or to have a discussion on them later this evening?
It was the intent to remove them from the Agenda so that we would not, they would not come up until a later date.
So, what you were making is a motion to amend the Agenda?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll second the amendment.
To remove those two items.
To remove, okay, just for clarification, the motion on the table is to remove Agenda Items 9.01 and 9.02 from the action portion of the, from the entire Agenda. Any further discussion?
At this point, if I may, Madam Chair, I think it's appropriate for perhaps some rationale as, as to why we want to move these items. I don't think it's inappropriate to have discussion on, on a change to the Agenda. And so, if, if Mr. McCosker could just give me a little insight about why he wanted to remove these items, I don't necessarily have any objection, I was just curious.
Sure.
If I may.
Absolutely.
One of my constituents came up last, at our last meeting and spoke at length about this issue, and frankly, what she had to say kind of hit home with most of us about we don't, we didn't have enough data to support what we were doing. So, I believe that once we've let this go for a little bit and we have some data to bring back, then we can look at it and, and, you know, is it working, is it not working, that type of thing.
Okay, okay.
And that was exactly right, our constituents that, you know, Mr. Hironz and I have constituents that are, have emailed all of us also.
Okay.
And, you know, the intent from laying, laying something on the table, under Robert's Rules, is to lay it on the table until, until, until it progresses and comes back, back up, so we can remove it from the Agenda. I would just hope it wasn't the intent to remove it from the Agenda and put it on next week, you know, in two weeks. So, that was the intent from laying it on the table, but I'm okay with the removal from the Agenda from 901 and 902, and I already have a second.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded.
Madam Chairman, is it, what we're voting on is a motion to amend the Agenda? And Mrs. Egan, it sounds like you are agreeable to his...
Second, yeah.
Second, all right, just so we're clear, so what we're voting on is to approve the Agenda...
As amended.
As amended with those two items.
Removed.
Laid on the table.
Okay, all right, is everybody understanding the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to 4.01, Awards. I would like to recognize Mr. Joe Lewis, Principal of Stafford High School, for presentation of awards. Ooh. Great. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Madam Chairman, School Board Members, and Superintendent Benson, I am pleased to bring our Stafford High School Field Hockey Team and several, several of their members for recognition. Our girls' field hockey team was awarded the Virginia High School League Sportsmanship Award for their season. This award is given to the team that clearly demonstrates through the behavior of its coaches, players, and fans that good sportsmanship is a top priority. We are very proud of our coaches, players, fans, for earning this recognition. And as a former coach, I can say that the kids receive this basically because of the mentorship of their coaches, Danny and Robin Woody. I should say Danny Warders and Robin Woody. Also, a number of these players were selected to the 5A All-State Field Hockey Team. They were Leah Constantine, Emily Crescho, Gail Podlesny, and Rachel Riley. Please join me in congratulating these players and coaches.
Oh, not us.
Mayor McCheese.
Oh, man. I'd like to recognize Greg Martin, Safety and Security Specialist, Mike Justice, Coordinator of Health Physical Education and Driver's Education, and Deputy Richmond from the Sheriff's Office for presentation of awards this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Benson. It is our pleasure to present to you an outstanding individual who is vital to keeping our students safe on their routes to school. Would Dick Norton please join us at this time? Mr. Norton. Dick Norton, a school crossing guard for Stafford County Public Schools who directs traffic at Stafford High School and Gale Middle School, was recently selected as one of six outstanding crossing guards in the state of Virginia as part of the Third Annual Virginia Outstanding Crossing Guard of the Year Program, which is part of the Virginia, Virginia Department of Transportation's Safe Routes to Schools Program. So, we are extremely grateful to your service, and you deserve the recognition from, from VDOT and Safe Routes to Schools. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Greg Martin, Stafford County Public School Safety and Security Specialist, for a few additional remarks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, before I get started off script, I want to introduce Captain McAllister, who's sitting in the back, and Lieutenant Jacobs, they showed up unannounced, so I want to make sure they get recognition. I nominated Dick for three reasons. He's a great employee, that's always a good thing. First thing was his integrity. First, he's a great guy with integrity, and being biased, he's from Maine, so anybody from Maine, my home state, deserves an award, right? Second was bravery. Anytime, anyone who is willing to stand in the middle of Enon Road every morning, dealing with hundreds of cars and buses, deserves a Medal of Valor. He does it in rain, sleet, snow, wind, total darkness, in cold temperatures, and sometimes with angry and very aggressive drivers. So, the third reason I nominated him was dependability. Dick rarely takes any time off, and under the conditions he deals with daily, that in itself is amazing. I am so pleased to have Dick working for me, he is one of a kind, and an amazing person who represents Stafford County Public Schools with dignity, humility, and professionalism. I've received numerous compliments from employees and county personnel, along with the Sheriff's Office, about the outstanding job he does each and every day. I'm very proud of you, Dick, and thank you for being a great employee for Stafford County Public Schools. In recognizing these accomplishments, we would like to present you with a plaque commending you for your achievements. Thank you.
Going to need a wagon to get everything out of here for, thank you, Mr. Norton. I'd like to recognize Quentin Sullivan, Supervisor, Facilities Planning, Design, and Construction, for a presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, and Superintendent Benson. It's with great privilege to announce, excuse me, the first three schools to receive the EPA's Energy Star under our new energy manager, Joshua Schimpf. Would Mr. Schimpf and the principals from Anthony Burns, Wide Water Elementary, and Falmouth Elementary, please come forward at this time? Anthony Burns Elementary was the first to receive this award, obtaining a score of 79 on the EPA Energy Star Rating Scale. Wide Water Elementary was the second to receive the award, obtaining a score of 84 on the EPA Rating Scale. And finally, Falmouth Elementary has also received the award, obtaining a score of 81 on the Energy Scale, Energy Star Rating Scale. Under the supervision of Principals Nancy Cole, Kristen McKinney-Nash, and Sally Johnakin-Putnam, staff, students, and a centrally located maintenance team have reduced their energy consumption throughout these facilities. I'd like to thank the people directly associated with these schools and their performance. The maintenance personnel consist of Mark Shelton, our Building Automation Manager, Mike Fagan, and Mike Madison, who are HVACR techs, Bill Tapscott, who's an HVACR tech, and Ben Guest, an electrician with our school district. With the services of KC Madigan and Associates LLC to certify the buildings, we have plans on certifying as many buildings in the county as possible. In order to do so, we must remain diligent in overseeing the energy consumption in our facilities. Stay tuned and get ready for great things here in Stafford County Public Schools.
Excellent. Got the plaques. I'd like to recognize Dinah Robinson, Supervisor for CTE Programs, for a presentation of awards.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson, I'm pleased to be here this evening to recognize a number of outstanding Stafford County Career and Technical Education teachers. Would all of the teachers receiving the WISE Gold Star Teacher Recognition, please come forward at this time? I would ask that you each step forward when your name is called to receive recognition and your certificate. These teachers are being recognized as Gold Star Teachers through the WISE Financial Literacy Program for outstanding achievement, with 90% or more of their students certified financially literate, and for being one of America's best financial educators. We have 17 teachers actually receiving this recognition. They are Trenta Mason, Brookpoint High School, June Prim, Brookpoint High School, Erin Plummer, Brookpoint High School, Caitlin Raybin, Brookpoint High School, James Ayers, Stafford High School, Nancy Brandon, Colonial Forge High School, Lakeisha Brown, Mountain View High School, Teresa Clark, North Stafford High School, Ray Eddie Vane, Stafford High School, Deborah Ingram, Colonial Forge High School, Joni McGlynn, Mountain View High School, Kay Pennick, Stafford High School, Kelly Pollock, Mountain View High School, William Swink, Colonial Forge High School, BJ Tucker, Colonial Forge High School, and Zindi Zacharol, Stafford High School. Congratulations, thank you.
We will now move to Agenda Item 4.02, I believe, Dr. Benson? I think.
It's my pleasure to read a resolution that recognizes February 2016 as School Board Appreciation Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built, and whereas locally elected and appointed school boards play an important and vital role in the representative democracy and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children, and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy, and whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas this year's theme, Turning Vision into Results, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders, and whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relationships between the thousands of Virginians who champion the mission of public education and school board members. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Stafford County Public Schools recognizes the contributions of the state's local school boards to the academic success of its public school students, and expresses its sincerest recognition to local board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the state. And be it finally resolved, Stafford County recognizes February 2016 as School Board Appreciation Month, and encourages local school divisions and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school board members adopted by the Stafford County School Board this 23rd day of February 2016. On a, on a more personal note, would just say that, that the work that we have ongoing within our county is, is really incredible, and attributed to your efforts in helping us stay focused on, on the most important thing, which is the experiences that our young people are, are having, and we're very fortunate in our community that the experiences pre-K through high school are really phenomenal, and you all have done a lot to ensure that continuity over time, expanding opportunities where, where we can, and that's evident in our program of, of studies, the high schools, what we've done to try and, and create equity of access in our, our middle schools, new initiatives like our upcoming C5W, efforts to try and, and really focus on the most important things for our kids to be successful. You guys are an incredible part of that, incredibly important to make that happen. And quite frankly, I can't think of another group of folks that I would rather spend a good part of my Saturday with, given our most recent work session that, that was, we accomplished, I think, quite, quite a bit. So, I think exciting things ahead. I'm very much looking forward to continue to working with you as we turn what is a really good school system into a nationally recognized school system here in Stafford. So, I do have certificates that are in order, thanks to...
You just missed them.
No, I didn't, I got them. I'm going to come around and say just thank you personally. Thanks so much.
Thank you for all you do.
For everything that you're getting ready to do.
Thank you for everything you do. I'm not sure, though, Dr. Benson, you have any school board members that will run with you to have our, our meetings with you yet, but I know you're trying, but...
Wait, wait, do we get time alone with you?
Yeah, but you got to run with him, and he's fast.
I might learn how to run.
Just, just to be clear, I always listen.
That's right, he does.
Oh, no, I meant that you have time.
I know he issued that challenge one time to the principals, so I'm not sure any of us have, I, I know I personally have not taken him up on that particular way to chat with him. Ms. Fallon, would you do our, read our proclamation regarding our social, professional social workers?
Yes, if we have any in the audience, please stand so we can recognize you. A proclamation to designate March as Social Work Appreciation Month. Whereas March is recognized as National Professional Social Worker Month, and is an opportunity to recognize the work done by our dedicated and experienced school social workers. Whereas our school social workers work diligently to provide students and families with basic needs such as food, clothing, financial assistance, mental health services, and medical services. Their work is often done behind the scenes and is confidential in nature, but is always approached with the intent of recognizing the strengths and potential of the children and families they serve. Whereas school social workers also assist school personnel and families in social and emotional support, prevention and intervention services, assessment and identification, counseling service, and crisis intervention, consultation, collaboration, and advocacy, family and community service, services, promoting educational equity, reducing barriers to learning, and, now therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board on this 23rd day of February 2016, that the school board hereby designates March as Social Work Month. The school board takes this opportunity to thank the school social workers for their efforts on behalf of our students, families, schools, and communities adopted by the Stafford County School Board this 23rd day of February 2016. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for so much that you do, even a resolution doesn't always cover everything that, that you all do, so thank you very much. Moving on to special presentations, Ms. Cotton-Gimm, I believe, 5.01, regarding our change in web content management system.
Tonight, we're pleased to share with you some forward movement on replacing our web content management system. As some of you may remember, we began our current web content management system, or CMS, School Fusion, in 2007. This first excursion into using a CMS allowed us to create a unified division-wide public vision for the school system. Prior to this, the school division and the schools were all over the place in how the websites looked, how they were hosted, and who was responsible for maintaining the sites. If the person managing the website for a school left the division, no one could take over and continue the work, as the passwords and access were that employee's alone. And the division site at that time was hosted on Virginia Penn. And six months prior to closing down Virginia Penn, the Virginia Department of Education called us and said, "You need to find a new place to go." So, they gave us six months, and we had to make a move. With School Fusion, we built templates with official school colors and mascots, and required parts of the webpages to include calendars and announcements. We were able to view all of the school division, all of the school calendars from one website. Schools were given guidelines on what needed to be on their school webpages. The division was able to push information down to all the school sites, inclement weather, calendar items, and announcements, just to name a few, and share with all of our community at once. It was leading edge at the time. Now, fast forward to 2016. Our School Fusion web tools are out of date, and the vendor is no longer providing support. Our schools and departments are using sites outside School Fusion, and we're back to not reflecting a school system, but a system of disjointed, unconnected schools. The communications landscape has changed dramatically since 2007. About five years ago, when Dr. Bridges was superintendent, we added the Blackboard Connect Parent Notification System as a communications tool in our toolbox. Around the same time, our contractual obligations with School Fusion were due a review. We looked at all the available K-12 web platforms and selected finalists, and were ready to move forward with another web hosting system. At the same time, the Student Information Management System moved forward, and instead of asking staff and teachers to learn two new systems at one time, we held off. We did this again in 2013 and again in 2014, but were unable to move forward for similar reasons. The School Fusion system has become more and more unreliable, and the vendor has indicated that they are moving away from that product. So, we're back to 2007, and we have to make a move. The past year, we have reviewed a number of platforms for, for web hosting, including a look at Civic Plus, which is what the county uses. Consideration was given to hosting it ourselves and moving away from template-driven CMS, but personnel and equipment costs would be excessive. The way people are communicating today is different than it was in... The way people are communicating today is different than it was in 2007. And with people communicating in so many ways, how can our schools keep up? The service we are proposing, the Blackboard Community Engagement Solution, will allow us to stay ahead of the many diverse communication platforms used to engage today's families and communities. It will also be adaptable to future technologies. This solution is more than just a web content management system, and it allows us to use systems we already have in place. It adds an app for SCPS, along with the social media component. So there will be an app for that. We have conducted a project charter, which the superintendent's cabinet has approved. The implementation team consists of representation from throughout the school system. These will be the people who will help Mrs. Pam Shelton, our web manager, implement this project. And I do want to recognize Mrs. Shelton and Mr. Dave Bennett, who is our web manager from AG Wright Middle School. Mr. Bennett has been web manager there since 2007. He's a classroom teacher, but does this as an additional duty. We've had conversations with parent groups and teacher groups about the likes and dislikes of our current system, and how they would like to receive information. And all school and site web managers, which are not paid positions, have had an opportunity to weigh in. The goals for this project are to provide an effective, user-friendly, and parent engagement solution, provide access for community members, parents, and students, and staff to information, and to improve Stafford County schools' official web presence by providing an updated, compelling visual design and web architecture for the division's web presence. What is the Blackboard Community Engagement Solution? This solution allows us to use our current parent notification system, a branded mobile app, social media management tools, and our websites to communicate more effectively with our parents, students, and community using any preferred device. Members of our community face a lot of challenges, ones that you are very familiar with yourselves: busy schedules, working far from home and commuting, cultural and language barriers, uncertainty about getting involved, and so much more. Our app and other components will cut through the challenges and help us reach everyone, will be able to get and keep their attention by giving families access to the information they most want. Users can choose to see only the schools they care about, making the app relevant and targeted to each individual. Families that receive alerts and check grades, attendance history, and missing assignments can help increase student success. And the system is made for mobile. And probably, the most compelling use of this communications engagement tool is the ability to cope. That is, to create once and post or publish everywhere. No longer will we have to create the website posting, and then create the Blackboard Connect message, and then the Facebook message, and the Twitter message. This will allow us to create the message once and post it everywhere. So what is the Blackboard Community Engagement Solution? These four integrated tools support a comprehensive communication strategy. The mass notification system is currently used by our school system. The mobile app will be specifically branded for the division, and will allow the user, the parents, or community member, to select the information they want to receive. The web hosting component with responsive web design is critical for support of mobile devices, since they are now used more often to access websites than computers are. And the sociability component, which will allow us to manage social interactions across social media. Of our comparative districts, Falkir, Loudon, and Spotsylvania are using the Blackboard Web Solution. Albemarle is using all of the Blackboard Community Engagement products except the web solution. Prince William has used Blackboard products for a number of years, but recently went out for bid, and they will be changing vendors. Chesterfield, Chesapeake, Kenricon, Albemarle all host their websites internally. And I just received a notification that Culpeper County Schools also uses Blackboard products, and just this afternoon announced their mobile app availability to their community. And why the push on mobile communication tools? Over 77% of parents have a smartphone. And primary access to the internet occurs more via mobile apps than desktop computers or mobile browsers. Our website will adjust to the device being used. No more pinching and squeezing on your phone, and you'll actually be able to log in from a mobile device. And if the board members will access their smartphones or personal devices and go to the link I provided you earlier, you'll be looking at a responsive web design from Loudon County Schools on your personal device. And at the same time, I'm going to go to, from a desktop, and this is what it looks like. And you're probably looking at something very similar to this, and you can maneuver It's actually a teal, but it's looking kind of greenish-yellow up there, so...
That's that projector, too.
All right. The content management system will allow for a modern look and feel. It'll provide easier access using mobile devices with responsive web design. That means it's going to change according to the device you're using. Auto updates are going to ensure compliance with federal and state requirements and privacy laws, ADA and Section 508 especially. And since this is hosted off-site, their uptime is much better than what we could do locally if we had weather here. It's not going to impact whether our communication tools are available. Here are a couple examples of how other districts and divisions have used this tool. And everything from student handbooks to that forms packet, first day of school, yeah, that one, school newsletters. So school districts and divisions across the US are finding ways to save money and The Blackboard Parent Link...
I have a question. You were talking about the papers coming home the first day of school, and I love that I don't have to bring them home. Are you able to sign them and send them back electronically as well?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Blackboard Parent Link Integrated Mobile App. So this would be what your phone would look like, and you can see the calendar, whichever calendars you want from whichever schools, notifications, assignments, attendance, cafeteria balance, bus info, and this works with the systems that we have in place. And the app will be available in both the Apple Store and in Google Play, and this is how parents would access information. It allows parents to view school news from their device, receive notifications from the division and the schools, easily access Parent and Student View, My School Books, Library Overdue Books, and other sites, and it will translate into more than 60 languages. Social media management is crucial to building our district's brand, establishing trust with our community, and getting information out fast. And the superintendent is currently working on a rebranding effort for the school division. But it's important to control social media management, or those rebranding efforts will be for naught. And this tool allows us, in one place, to do what, right now, it takes us several to do, and then each school with their Facebook and Twitter feeds and Instagram. So it brings it all together for us. We can monitor and manage our social media accounts in a single place. We can identify people who are commenting often about the school or the school division, and use them as thought leaders and key communicators in our community. And we can, it automatically filters out offensive content based on keywords. So all of that in one bucket. The cost highlights for FY '16, the total is a little over $36,000, and that has been taken from a variety of the Communications Office budget lines. And the costs for the system and training in FY '17 are budgeted within the superintendent's funding request for FY '17. The implementation plan will be aggressive, and we plan to have a public launch on August 31st, 2016. The launch will only be the beginning. We will continue throughout the '16-'17 school year in producing the websites and webpages and putting this all together. Yes, Ms. Healy?
The budget item on the agenda that we have says $97,000 for '17, and that says $7,200. Is that a more current figure?
The $97,000 includes training dollars, which I did not include, because it wasn't...
I thought you just said the $77,200 was for training.
No, it's not. That's the cost of the product. And there's an additional $20,000 in the budget for training, because we will have to bring our folks into the schools over the summer to do the work. And again, none of the web managers are paid for this, and most of them are teachers. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have just a quick question. You mentioned Parent View. Is Parent View, are we doing away with the actual...
No.
So it's just being incorporated into...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just do a quick follow-on to that? Have any of the divisions that are using this particular system also using Synergy?
Spotsy?
Because I want to, all right, we just want to make sure that it actually seamlessly connects. All right. Mr. Irons?
Did I miss something? Are each of the schools going to have a website built off of this?
Yes.
And are the classrooms going to work as Fusion does now?
Like, well, hopefully, much better than Fusion is working right now.
Essentially, they're going to have classrooms.
But yes, there are accommodations for...
You mentioned training for the web managers. What about training for the teachers?
We'll use the Train the Trainer method, where all of our web managers will come in, and...
What's our plan for that? You said the launch was planned for late August?
Correct. And again, we'll be working on this throughout the next school year, so it's not all going to happen by August 31st.
So come next, this coming school year, are we going to have struggles with teachers not posting stuff, not being able to post stuff to classrooms? You know, most parents get a lot of information out of the classrooms currently.
And right now, at the high schools, a lot of the teachers are not even using the School Fusion pages. They're using Synergy pages. They're using Synergy to do that communication. So we're hoping to move them into whatever is going to work for them. We have schools that aren't using Fusion at all. So you'll find some teachers are using Fusion, some are not.
I wouldn't mind seeing a kind of a solid plan of communicating to teachers and the training process for the teachers, because I'm pretty concerned about that. I think we're going to have a lot of parents with a lot of concerns if they, on day one, don't have a classroom link that they can go to, because I'll tell you, I think, I know there are some of my kids' teachers that don't use the Fusion pages, don't use them nearly as much, but there are some, or I would say the majority do. And I know I go there probably weekly to at least one of their classrooms to grab a syllabus, grab a form, something. So I just want to express, I have a lot of concern. I want to make sure this is done smoothly, and there's a plan in place to get the teachers up to speed, whether it's at their pace or the parents' pace of expectations.
And we do have a timeline, a workflow, and I'll be glad to share that with you.
I think that would be great. I do have a kind of a second follow-up question. I know a lot of our athletic teams, especially at the high school level, have gone off and used this other website. I don't know if it's provided, or the content manager is provided by VHSL or what, but they, it seems to be kind of catching on throughout the state.
They are required by VHSL to use the, our school's calendaring. So all of the competitions have to go in that calendaring system. And it's my understanding that this system will work with our school, and so they'll be able to capture that calendar. And I believe all of the high schools have taken their athletic website off to big schools, and there's one other.
Okay.
So again, it's the schools going outside because we weren't able to meet their needs with Social Fusion.
Yeah, I don't know if that's as big a deal. I'm not as concerned about that, but it'd be great to kind of capture them all again. One last question, somewhat technical possibly. Is there any browser restrictions on being able to view this? Does it work in all the most commonly-used browsers? Legacy browser, are there particular issues? I know, I checked out the site you sent us at my work today, and we, we're kind of a, you know, semi-secure network and old browser, I think it's 7 or something like that, I use 7. So it had some challenges there. I, you know, that's somewhat of a unique case, but is there anything that if parents, families who, particularly of our children of most need, are going to have most likely older equipment to be able to access on, are there any concerns have been highlighted in any of the material by the company of legacy browsers or old browsers?
No.
Okay. All right.
And with this, each school will be able to tailor the website to fit their needs or their content?
It is a content management system, so it's template-driven. We will design the template, and the schools will have much more flexibility than they have with Fusion now to make changes, but there will be certain requirements what has to be on the school websites.
So at Moncur, we'll still be able to have Buddy the Bear on ours?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just real quick, just implementation plan, that's the only thing missing here, right? So that's where I'm with Mr. Irons on it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could just say, there is a project charter to go along with this that's similar to what we did with implementing the new financial management HR package, and we certainly can make that available for the board to read the more detailed part of the implementation. I do want to stress that the current product that we have is end of life, okay? It is at end of life, and it's not supported anymore. So we've got to figure out, you know, how to make this better moving forward, more reliable, and, you know, meeting some compliance challenges, and easier to use, right? It is, this is not exactly a what-you-see-is-what-you-get kind of editor, and I have some firsthand experience in trying to maintain my blog inside of this tool. So it's time that we move, you know, to a 21st century tool to improve communication. And the tool is just part of it, right? We also know that we need to develop a new communication plan for the division as a whole. The tool is, you know, a vehicle for getting and collecting information, but we also make sure we've got the right strategies for the kind of information that we're getting out there and that we're trying to collect. So that's the next part of it as well.
I think Ms. Kidby.
Just real quick, you indicated, Dr. Benson, that there was a project charter. I'm excited to see that. Thank you for being willing to send that to the board.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we will move on to 5.02. This is a carryover item from our last meeting, which, when we ended at like 11:00, 11:30, we didn't get a chance to have our January 2016 Quarterly Financial Report. So we wanted to lead with that, so we would get to it this evening. Mr. Wolf?
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, school board members, Dr. Benson, my goal is to briefly summarize this report for your behalf. Obviously, it has a cover, and then there's a table of contents. The first major item on page one reviews all the revenues and expenditures and our fund balance. And basically, we have no major significant variances as between what we'd expect at this point in time after six months of activity and where our actual results are. We typically, with the county, our revenues lag a little bit until we start into the second half of the year, in which case, a lot of our spending occurs in... second half of the year, in which case a lot of our spending occurs in the second half of the year. So since they match what, to get to a break-even point, we have to spend more to get more. But there are no issues to bring to your attention with regard to that. And on Exhibits A and B, A is the balance sheet and B is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, you'll see that we compare pretty similarly to the prior year. There are a few balance sheet items that are a little bit higher and lower and you will find that from year to year that that is the case. When you look at our fund balance on page two, it's slightly higher at this point in time and that is primarily because we've issued more POs, which are encumbrances, which wind up technically for accounting purposes being reflected as fund balance. On page three, when you look at the comparison of our revenues against expenditures, you probably couldn't get much closer if you tried. Again, the fund balance is slightly higher. I apologize, this next exhibit should say Exhibit C and when we post it, we will get it corrected. This is a carryover from our monthlies, which in this schedule winds up being reflected as Exhibit A as opposed to Exhibit C. In here, again, more detailed analysis by the major categories of instruction, administrative attendance, administration attendance, health, pupil transportation, operation and maintenance, food services, facilities, debt service, technology, and contingencies and reserves. And it's in more detail and as you've requested, it reflects the balance that we've expended, encumbered, and then what is remaining and gives you a percentage of the total funds that have either been realized as revenue or obligated to date with a little summary of our fund balance. The next exhibit shows you, it's relatively the same as what it was as of October 31st, shows you the status of our adopted budget for fiscal year 2015, which basically is the adopted budget plus the supplemental appropriations for the buses that the county gave us the additional funding for of eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand and then the prior year encumbrances that are reflected as our beginning fund balance for accounting purposes. So, and that all ties into the schedules in front of that. And then, of course, some footnote disclosures, which are pretty standard, but go over all the major categories that we reflect in our financial statements. And again, there are no real surprises here. At the last meeting, I did hand out a schedule of our, a summary of our amended budget and the transfers that we'd processed to date. And Madam Chair, I don't know if you want me to hand out hard copies of each of those schedules again and go over that or whether there are any specific questions that any of you have. I don't want to beat a dead horse if I don't have to.
I think we're, I think we're good unless I was just gonna pull the board and see if anybody had any questions or comments. Ms. Skidby, anything?
In general or concerning the transfers?
Either one.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate the, the schedule that you sent out with the transfers. That's a, that's a glimpse at some internal financial changes that need to be made on a regular basis that we haven't had before and I appreciate the fact that the board is being kept abreast of those transfers. And I also appreciate the fact that the transfers are happening at a different rate than they were happening in prior years. I did have a couple of questions on a couple of these items and they may, they may not have an easy answer, so if you can't get to me right away with that answer, that's fine. I noticed that there are a couple of the detailed expenditures by department, for example, pupil transportation, that when you get to Exhibit B, which is our balance sheet, aren't exactly the same. For example, in Exhibit B, we have expenditures for pupil transportation of three million seven ninety-seven, three ninety-eight, but on the detail, it's four-point-nine million. I'm assuming it's the 1.2 fleet charges, but-
No, it's not.
It isn't?
There is a standard accounting approach to presenting the financial data and what we do is for Exhibits A and B, we use the way we do it in the CAFR. And typically, what happens is you remove the capital outlays and reflect it as its own amount-
So all that's pulled out-
-on the one schedule, whereas if, you know, on the other schedule, it's shown in transportation and what have you.
But interestingly enough, in transportation, there isn't any capital outlay, so I'm not quite sure what it, what it is. So I kind of thought with the other ones, it might be the capital.
I will get back to you specifically about that and I will share that information with the rest of the school board members.
Yeah, that's fine. And we're seeing a, a, a significant reduction in pupil transportation when it comes to the, which line was it?
Fuel costs.
Yeah, the fuel costs. Can we anticipate for that, for the second half of the year as well?
I don't have a crystal ball, but it, it has been dropping, it seems like every month, a few more pennies. And so it's, I don't think in the immediate future that we have any concerns. We did try to remain somewhat hopeful, but yet tried to leave ourselves some margin for error in developing the fiscal year 2017 budget. But as far as 2016 is concerned, I think we're in relatively good shape.
Anticipated, my very next question was the, the 2017 budget. I think you, we kind of think alike in that regard. That, that's all I had. A couple of little things, but I'll give you a call.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Healy?
I'm following Ms. Skidby's footsteps. I actually studied these numbers, so I won't ask you all my questions, but I do have one. And that has to do with the materials and supplies category. I noticed that in instruction, the amount that has been obligated to date is fairly low compared to the percentage in the other categories. Have we put any holds on that?
No.
Okay, because it's only thirty-eight-point-two percent when half the year is gone and do we expect to obligate the rest of that before the end of the fiscal year?
Let me just clarify. For the school site funds, we do provide the funds, I think, the majority of the funds, I think seventy percent of the funds, we make available through this point in time and I think we probably have just now, real time, released the funds for the rest of the year already. So as of this point in time, there may have been some school site funds that hadn't yet been obligated, but I can look into that matter and get an answer on behalf of everybody.
My concern is that the, that the schools' hands aren't tied in obligating funds earlier in the fiscal year so that they can actually use them in the classroom.
We've done anything differently than we've done in, in prior fiscal years.
But maybe we need to look at how we did it in prior fiscal years and learn from, you know, learn, learn from our mistakes and that's something I would like to look into because this category for instruction is half of what some of the other categories are.
We will look into that.
In obligated. Thank you.
And provide you with a detailed answer.
I'll, I'll take the executive summary. I don't need the detail. I just, just untie any hands that are tied out there in the schools and let them spend their money.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Moving on. Next, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Tonight, I only have one speaker signed up. I will give the invitation, but if you are desiring to speak tonight while that person's up there, go ahead and line up behind them so you can follow them right along. So, so individuals wishing to comment may do so by responding. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. We do have our yellow light working, which will go off after two minutes. That tells you that you have one minute remaining. If the red light goes on, you have five seconds to wrap up your comments, please. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So I'd like to start with Patty Concepcion, if you'll come on forward. And if anybody else would like to speak, if you would line up behind her, once you have given your comments, if you will sign in on the clipboard, I guess to my right and would be to your. Yeah. I know, that would be the same. So, great, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a concerned parent of Stafford Middle School and I come here before you today with the concern of ongoing bullying at Stafford Middle School. Now, I can tell you that this bullying occurred or began in the fall, sometime in the fall of 2014. My daughter, let me start out by saying, my daughter is in the GATE program. She's an excellent student and academic, great school, great grades all of her years in school up until this bullying. She reported this bully to vice principal of her school. It continued. She later was sent to guidance. It continued. And this went on for months. In May of 2015, I contacted, I spoke with the principal and the very next day, this student, this bullying student tripped my daughter going down the stairs. It was caught on surveillance. So at this point, my daughter has reported it. The administrators are aware, guidance is aware, I've contacted the principal. And the very next day, she's tripped down the stairs. I again speak with administrators and the guidance and the DRO. The student, I requested that this student be removed from my daughter's class. It took three requests before he was removed from her class. Now, whether this student had consequences, I don't know. I can tell you that my daughter witnessed him physically attack other students and she again reported that. So now it's not only my daughter, it's other students as well and it has continued. Now, fast forward to the beginning of this year, eighth grade. We requested before the school year ended that he not be in any of her classes. They obliged. However, he ended up on her school bus. And rather than remove him from the school bus, my daughter was reassigned to another bus, which I feel is unfair because she has done nothing wrong. She's a victim and now she feels victimized all over again. She stopped reporting these, these assaults because she felt, I have already contacted the school. She had contacted the school, did everything right. And in her exact words, nobody cares, Mom. Nobody's gonna do anything, nobody cares. She displays the effects of this ongoing bullying. And at this point, I feel that we have contacted everybody that we can contact, from administrators to Superintendent Benson, to Doc, to Mr. Martin, and here we are still. So I ask you to review, assist me in any way that you can.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? If not, I will close public comment and we will move on to 7.01, superintendent's comments.
Just one area for comment this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you. I want to provide a little bit of additional information regarding the announcement we made around our decision to close on March 1st for the primary. First of all, I want folks to understand, and we certainly did put this in the press release as well, is that there were multiple pieces of information that helped inform that recommendation to the board, including a review of what other school divisions are doing. And we've actually had additional school divisions in the area decide to make that closure for students and teachers since the board made their decision to do so. But also, some additional information that was forthcoming from the registrar and a conversation with the sheriff's office, given that it looks like this is going to be a high-volume primary. And so large numbers of adults in our buildings that are not normally in our buildings and then the potential for traffic and parking issues being, being a challenge. And as such, made that recommendation to the board. The board decided that we would be, we would be closed for students and, and teachers that day. In looking to determine what we would have to do to make up time for not only the March 1st, but also days that we have missed due to inclement weather, we included in that same release an announcement that we would go to school full days on March 25th, May 27th, and June 13th in order to capture some of the days that we missed during, due to inclement weather, as well as add an additional day at the end of the school year, June, June 16th. There are two pieces in, in code that speak to our requirement to make up time. One is that we need to do our, our best effort in any case to try and make up time. The other is that after we have, have done that, there's an opportunity to do essentially a two-for-one after having made up five, five of the days. Based upon time that we have built into our current schedules and we have more time at the high school level than we have at the elementary level, but taking into consideration that we, we essentially bank time in our schools, it is not absolutely necessary for us to take that last day, June 16th, and make that a make-up day if we are implementing the, the two-for-one model. I think that there was an interest in pursuing the, the spirit of the intent, which is the, trying to make up those days in a meaningful way. The reality is adding a day on at the end of the year is, is, could be a challenge for us. We have lots of good things going on in our classrooms across the board. I, I hope that it's not just about our student performance on standardized tests, the high-stakes testing that we have our students participate in here in Virginia, that, you know, we want experiences that go well beyond that. We certainly see that with the curriculum work that we're doing. But at this point, I'm, I'm saying publicly that unless we end up missing some additional days, we will not be asking our students and teachers to, to come to work on June 16th. We will, we will be retracting that unless we see any additional challenges with weather between now and the end of whenever that weather season rolls out of here. But I would say to the board that historically, we've missed days in March and so, you know, I don't, I know, but we're, we're not out of the woods yet, okay? And hopefully, that's not what we, what we experience. But I wanted to share that publicly and make that announcement. Thank you.
Dr. Benson, I usually wouldn't do this, but I know that you mentioned to me about the bill moving through the, the legislature right now about what we want our graduates to look like. I just wondered if you would spend a couple of minutes, since we had last time, the presentation from Ms. Neely about what we were doing with C-5W. It just seemed like it'd be a perfect time to tout that work. Sorry to catch you on the spot.
So the curriculum work that we're currently doing, just as a reminder with the board, is trying to develop an overarching framework for our expectations, our, for our young people in the division, actually, the adults in the division as well. But more specifically, what does it mean to be a graduate of Stafford County Public Schools? And our C-5W has landed on a, a number of terms that we're in the process of, of defining in a meaningful way that we think will have a positive impact on the kind of work that our young people are asked to do in classrooms, that we want them to be able to work collaboratively. We want them to be good citizens. We want them to be good, critical thinkers, to be creative and, and be able to work with other people, to work collaboratively. There are a couple of bills in Richmond right now, one in the House and one in the Senate that would require, if passed, would require Virginia to develop a portrait of a graduate. And they're, they're using five Cs, the same five Cs that we're focused on. Not, not because they took the work that we did, but, but because there seems to be, you know, there, there just seems to be this synergy. I think what's really positive is that Ms. Neely and a, a team of a hundred teachers and administrators went through a process that, that landed us on our five Cs and it is very strongly aligned with other efforts that are going on in Virginia to, to raise the bar for the kinds of experiences our young people- raise the bar for the kinds of experiences our young people should be having in our classrooms. So it's a good path for us to be on.
Thanks for sharing that. It just seemed like it completely validated the work that we got to see last week. So, moving along to consent items, do I have a motion?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
I do have an edit to one of the minutes that are included in this. Should I bring that up now or after the motion's made?
Let's get the motion and then we'll...
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Mr. Haran?
The edit I have is from the Feb. 9th School Board Meeting under my comments, under Board Member, 7.02 Board Member Comments. I just want to make sure the company is spelled correctly. I reference, it's written as M.I.C.U. Inc., which I can understand why. But it's M, capital M, lowercase c, the letter Q, Inc. McQ, Inc. Thank you.
Is there a motion amended? Ms. Kibbe, did you make the initial motion? So as amended?
Yes.
Okay. And you agree?
Yep.
Okay.
Most likely.
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action items, 9.01 and 02 have been removed. So I'm going to say 9.03 because that's how it looks on our agenda concerning approval of the proposed FY 2017, FY 2026, well, capital improvement plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading my note. Mrs. Spindel and Mr. Sullivan are filling in for Mr. Haran this evening to respond to any specific questions that you may have. But I just want to point out a couple of things before we enter into discussion with the board regarding any other additional information that you might want before we see whether or not we're able to move this forward. We've tried to make some adjustments as a result of the work sessions that we have had to bring the CIP more in line with available resources. We're not there yet, based upon the information that's provided to you. We continue to work with our colleagues on the local government side in exploring strategies for mechanisms that will get it in line eventually. Unfortunately, this is something that we really can't take on just by ourselves. We're going to need some support from our colleagues across the street. But there are things that we have done here that will help us move in that direction that include changing the size of the proposed rebuild for Ferry Farm from 950 to 750 students and sliding it one year to the right in the CIP so that completion date moves a little bit, as well as looking at moving Elementary School 18 and High School Number 6 out of the 10-year window, the majority portion in any case. And then deferring some bonded, some bond-funded infrastructure projects and changing the funding source for the library renovation at North Stafford, a commitment that we very much want the board to make in creating a space that could potentially positively impact pretty much every student and adult in that building. We also know that there was a recommendation from staff to the board supervisors' fab to consider the possibility of redirecting some of our carry-forward funds to offset what might be borrowed from the Moncur rebuild. That's not something that has been carved in stone to date, but it's something that folks are talking about that would get us even closer to balancing. So with that, we want to try to respond to any questions board members have. I just would like to also note that for both Moncur Elementary rebuild and Ferry Farm Elementary rebuild, we have a new set of elementary design specs. And we're looking to build this new generation, next generation elementary school that really addresses the changing demographic that we're experiencing in our community. I think positions our young people to be successful and that our current elementary design specs are almost, they're almost 20 years old. And so, you know, it's important that we try to hold on, from my perspective, to as much of the various improvements that we've captured in those design specs as possible. Keeping in mind that it is, it's fluid, right? It is absolutely fluid. And we don't know for sure what a building is going to cost us until we enter into a construction contract. And so there are, there's some estimation that goes along with that, as well as an escalation in costs from one year to the next that is an estimate. And I want to keep that in mind. These are estimates until we enter into contracts. So with that, I turn it over to the board.
Are there any questions? Ms. Egan?
I just have a timing question. Are we still having a meeting on Thursday? Are we still planning on getting together to discuss budget, CIP-related items? Yes?
We are.
Okay.
How the agenda is currently written, it does say budget only. I'm not sure, I mean, just, I went back to read it, so I was sure. So I'm not sure, unfortunately, our parliamentarian's not here, about whether the CIP would be considered part of the budget. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm just, I'm being upfront. I don't know.
We can, if, when, if we get Miss Cotton, give him to check on the way we noticed the meeting more specifically.
It says, it's a budget work session because it came off of our budget calendar.
Budget work session.
The CIP is considered part of the budget process, is it not?
I can make you an argument. It is.
I know it is on the board of supervisors' side.
On the county side it is?
It is.
I mean, it is a part of the budget, but we typically approve it prior to the budget being approved.
Depends on whether that says operating budget. If it says operating budget, then if it's noticed as operating budget, if our discussion is concerning operating budget, then I would, then I would say it would be very difficult to include this as part of that discussion. If it just says budget, we might be able to sneak it in.
Yeah.
My opinion. That's just my opinion.
I'd like to have two more days to digest some of the, some new information and maybe take this up on Thursday and, you know, tackle it all at once.
Let's get some of the other questions and circle back to that. How about we do that? See where we land with questions first.
I did have a question in it, and it is in relation to Moncur. If you look at your summary, the fiscal year 2017, Moncur is 9.31 million, which reflects that $2 million reduction. If you look at the detail of Moncur, it does not reflect that $2 million reduction. I'm very hesitant to send forth a CIP where the document itself doesn't balance. It's a little frustrating to me.
If you look at the sheet itself, if you go down to where the funding sources are...
For Moncur?
Yes. If you see it's split between current revenue and bonds, in prior year, we have 1.7 million there.
All right. Wait. I'm on the detail now for Moncur.
So it's on page nine? Are we on page nine?
Page nine, yes ma'am.
Okay. We've got 2.5 expended prior years, then 11.431, which is 2 million higher than the 9.431.
Yes, ma'am. But if you go further down, where it says funding sources right below that, you'll see that current revenue is 1.7 million in prior year and then 2 million in '17. It's broken out between bond and current revenue.
Okay. But if you look at the, come on, slow down here. If you look at the summary, though, as you go across, although it's just bonded, that's just the summary of bonded. So what you're suggesting is that the difference is current revenue, but that has not been approved. So we're putting forth a CIP with a hope and a prayer, kind of, with that $2 million, basically.
Yes. We put that $2 million in based on the meeting that Scott held last week.
Okay.
With the county.
Okay. Well, at least I can see where you're accounting for it now. I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. Thank you.
The roll-up sheet, we typically just show bond on our roll-up sheet.
It's only bonded?
But then when it goes over to the county, it'll show everything.
Okay.
We have a separate roll-up sheet that goes in front of the bond that shows the county's information, what they're spending in bond, what we're spending in bond, and what we're spending in current revenue and what they're spending in current revenue.
So in terms of bonded projects too, we've reduced infrastructure significantly as well for several years. Okay. Does that mean that we've changed the scope of projects or are we going to fund them differently?
We're trying to fund, we're trying to go along with their 2% current revenue or cash spent based on the budget, the guidelines that they gave us a couple of years ago, where we try to spend 2% of our budget on, in cash, on capital infrastructure.
Okay.
So we've tried to do that across the board and lower our bond borrows.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. I know we have to follow the guidelines that have been identified by our local funding It just is a little difficult to see how the cash capital is going to happen for us.
Right.
And so I'm a little concerned about some of the infrastructure. And I get it. I understand why we have to balance this thing. And I actually think it's been a pretty heroic effort between the part of the county and the schools, working together, the staff, working together to make this work. I know there's been concessions on the county's side as well as some changes that we've made on the school's side. But I just feel that I need to go on record saying that I have concerns about our infrastructure in terms of cash available to go forward with all the projects that we would like to go forward with. But I appreciate the work that's been done on this.
As I understand it, the, on the board of supervisors' calendar for last Tuesday, they had this on as sort of like their, I think they call it new business hours, like an information item. And it had in that resolution about the $2 million. So the board of supervisors has seen that. We had not seen it. Most of you had been consulted concerning that. So they seemed to be aware of it, but they did not vote that time because it's sort of like ours, information and action, just so you sort of know what I believe is tracking across the street. But Dr. Benson, I certainly can be corrected.
Well, the other thing that would suggest is that in the event that all of the funding is not available, we're going to, we'll end up having to reduce the scope of the design. And so there will be elements that we'll have to determine whether or not they get included in the final design or not. And I think we would need to prioritize which of those we want to ensure happen. As part of the conversation that board members had, we talked about the possibility of doing things like, you know, where the collaborative spaces might be within the building. We might end up having to have them at 3, 4, and 5 versus K1 and 2. Might be something that we could look at as concession. What we're planning to do with gymnasium space and community access might be another point of discussion. And the contract's written in such a manner that we can go back in and make those adjustments as we know for certain what resources we're going to have available to make those things happen. At some point, I think the board needs to say, this is what we want to build and we're going to try and figure out how to secure all the resources that we need to do that. Until we definitively say that's what it is, there's still going to be some question for folks on the local government side. Is this the direction that we're headed? And I did check if board members want to have some more time to think, that we could amend the agenda in the manner it was advertised for Thursday and have some more conversation and wait until Thursday if that's helpful.
How we approach the CIP is making sure that we send our wishes and desires across the street. So I am certainly open to consensus, the board, of whether we would like to defer this item to Thursday, to vote...
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Sure. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm a little confused about this property acquisition, 1.7 million prior year.
Yes.
Are you talking about the land?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that the supervisors purchased that and they're holding the deed until we actually open the school and convey our property to them. So I don't think we've, well, to my knowledge, we have not expended a dime to purchase the property.
You've been carrying that figure in the Moncur project for the last few years since the land deal. I mean, I'm carrying it because that's what the county requires, that we show everything regardless of whether or not we paid for it or they paid for it. We have to show what's been spent in the project.
So they're going to move...
So that means we have 1.7 million in our books that we haven't spent and don't have to spend because my understanding is, I have to take a look at that MOU, which has been amended several times over the years, but my recollection was that the MOU said that the county would purchase the land, hold title to the land until we opened the school. And then when we convey the current Moncur real estate to the county, they would convey the property to us. And I don't remember there being a price tag on that. So perhaps there is some extra funding here.
We've just been carrying it, similar to what we do with the Fleet Services, where we carry the total amount, even though a portion of that is typically paid by the county.
Ms. Neely, did you say that there's a memo of understanding related to this?
Oh, yeah. It's been amended a couple of times. There's a memorandum of understanding about the purchase of that Moncur property. When we identified the property, we didn't have money to buy it. But my recollection is that the county said, well, we'll buy the property and then you just surplus your property to us when we're done. And basically, we're doing a swap of valuable commercial property on Garrisonville Road for the property the county has purchased.
Ms. Neely, I would also add that when they, when Moncur, when the board of supervisors came to Moncur and wanted our part of the land there, that was supposed to also offset that because they've taken that land, the board of supervisors took that land and sold it to VDOT. So we're actually sitting on less land than we used to at Moncur because they already took that land. And that was supposed to be part of the understanding as well, part of that.
There is a memorandum of understanding, but that land is not ours. We're building a school on it, but it's not ours. But we have, we have an agreement that it will be ours when the school's built and we convey our land. I mean, if you get it for me, I'll review it. But we've actually had to amend that a couple of times because of the extensions in the timing for the school. We had originally intended to rebuild and open Moncur earlier. But every time, we got held back, for whatever reason, it's no fault of the county, but, you know, we were delayed, then we amended the memorandum of understanding to extend the date. But I would question why this shows that we've expended those funds. And maybe there's some budget magic.
Well, I can certainly talk to Scott and the county budget and find out if there's a way for us to take that off until we...
And I can reach out to Mr. Romanello tomorrow.
We're not going to have to spend it. That's my point, though. We don't, we're going to trade, in essence. We're going to deed our property, the current Moncur site, to the county and they're going to...
I'll get a copy of that memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, it's been a few years since I've seen it, so...
About three years, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I could be wrong. I hope not. But I don't think we spent that money. And that doesn't give a true picture. You know, I'm looking here and I'm seeing the total project cost, 31.362 million. Wow, that's really gone up. But if that includes, you know, 1.7 that we haven't expended and will not have to expend because we're basically doing a land swap, you know, that cuts that back. So I, you know, we're told that we need to be more transparent with our finances and things like that. And this is not a reflection on y'all, but I think, I think we do need to take a look at this and address. And I think Mrs. Kibbe raised this question, and Ms. Fallon has some, you know, good points here that we need to consider here because we are accountable. But I don't want to be accountable for any more than we're actually spending.
Right.
So...
Looking at some of the language, it appears that we would like more information, more clarification. It seems like the census of the board is to wait till Thursday, but I am open for any other decision. All right.
And I will, I'll reach out to Mr. Romanello tomorrow as well, see if we can get a copy of that memorandum of understanding.
We should have it. We've got it.
Is it in our office?
Make sure you get all the amendments because it's been amended a couple of times.
It's been amended. It was amended in front of the Planning Commission even, so... Moving along, we have item 9.04. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, item 9.04, landscaping buffer agreement easement between Stafford County Public Schools and...
County Public Schools and Tricord, Inc.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. First item, 10.01, approve proposed new strategic plan beliefs, vision, mission, and goals, and establish school board biennial priorities for each goal. Dr. Benson?
And this is just for information, it's the evening, but we, we need to move this effort forward. Uh, and I'm, I'm hopeful that in two meetings' time that the Board is ready to adopt new core values, vision, mission, and goals for the division. This has been vetted by a large number of focus groups, uh, we've, we've, including our Strategic Planning Steering Committee. We're, we're ready to move to the next phase, which is, once the Board has adopted this, is that we, or even if prior to, some conversation with Board members about biennial priorities. Each one of the goal areas at the bottom of the, the sheet there where it says student achievement, workforce, resource, stewardship, and communication will need to have biennial board priorities established that will help fine tune our efforts in, in a two-year window. I would hope that those priorities would be strongly connected to our budget initiatives. So for example, one of the areas under student achievement, or actually you could even look at it under workforce if you think about workload, might be to reduce class size. And we know the Board is very interested in continuing to, to do that. So we set that as a biennial priority. We maybe focus in on certain grade levels or subject areas. We identify the metrics to say that we're gonna, this is how we're gonna tell whether we make, make it or not. And then we put strategies in place to, to make it happen. So we're, we're, we're bringing this to the Board formally at this point to start the process of, of getting it adopted.
I'm sure I have a question. It says here that you're proposing to do this prior to March 8th.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that, I think that the dialogue that the Board may need to have about the biennial priorities probably needs to take place in a work session. I think this is a difficult format to discuss where the Board wants to focus its efforts in this, in the next couple of years in each one of the four goal areas. And so we need to start that work, even, you know, even if that is before the Board adopts. I'm thinking that the general goal areas are not likely going to, to change significantly. That we'll have a goal in student achievement, workforce, stewardship, and communication. And so we need some help from the Board figuring, well, so what more specifically does the Board want us to focus on? So it's, it's the Board's opportunity to shape our work for the next two years.
Gotcha. Okay. Are there any comments, Mr. Hirons or Ms. Healy? I know you all have been involved in, in this. I, I just want to give you that opportunity if there's anything you want to say.
Just very briefly, it was amazing to work with the, the group of people on that committee. It was just so impressive, the, the staff, the students, the community members, um, under Dr. Benson's leadership, I think, put together a, a really well-crafted document. And it was not, um, it was not done lightly, and it was, um, at times painful to think. I, I think Mr. Hirons pointed out that when we had the thrive, to have the students thrive, that was a very intentional use of the word, but it, it didn't just pop out there. You know, it's just pretty, pretty amazing. And, and particularly impressive students, I think, um, that had a lot to contribute to this. And this is a strategic plan for Stafford County Public Schools. So students, you know, need to be involved in it. And, and they were, they were very, very, um, very helpful in, in putting this draft together. But now it is in the hands of the Board. So, you know, our work is starting.
Mr. Hirons?
Yeah, it's incredible students. And I really enjoyed working on the students as much as anybody, but the, the entire team effort was really fantastic, and it was a good representation of Stafford County Public Schools as an organization of our parents, teachers, staff members, students, um, and community leaders. I would recommend we go ahead and try to schedule a work session to keep this on, on track and on schedule. I know Dr. Benson wants to, uh, roll this out as part of rebranding of our school division in August of this year, you know, over the summer. So we really do have to get, buckle down and, and get this work done. If it's available, March 8th, prior to the, prior to our meeting for a work session, I would suggest we go ahead and do that. I guess Dr. Benson sort of alluded to, I, I don't know if a work session is gonna take a really long time. I think we're, we're all kinda starting to get our minds kinda working in some synergy of, of a common direction. And I think, uh, this, uh, document probably gets us moving even further in that direction. So I think discussion's gonna be very free-flowing, very easy to have. So I think we could probably have a work session prior to the March 8th, 8th meeting and, uh, be ready to take it to action March 8th or shortly thereafter.
Preference on time, 5:30, 6:00, or what do you?
8:00.
Are we talking about March 8th?
March 8th.
March 8th.
That's prior to our regularly scheduled meeting. It'd be before our 7:00.
I would, I would suggest 5:30 start time. Give us, it does give us plenty of time that evening, but I think we can probably accomplish our work in that evening.
Okay. All right. Well, I invite all of you all to review the great work. I love a one-page document, so it's awesome. And to start thinking about our biennial priorities, this goes along with our thoughts on hopefully biennial in the future budgeting and other things. So I think this is a wonderful piece in our, not just financial, but also our strategic planning going forward. So if you all will mark your calendars for 5:30, uh, start time work session on March 8th prior to our 7 o'clock regularly scheduled meeting. All right. No further comments. We'll move on to 10.02, approve Stafford County Public Schools Staffing Standards Plan. I know that's Mrs. Cale. Well, I had one of those. As you all will recall, um, we, we looked at these this Saturday at our work session with this lovely document with, uh, lots of detail and, uh, good work. Mrs. Cale?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Benson. I'm very excited tonight to present to you for information and propose staffing standards. The last time the school board approved a staffing plan was October 25th, 2011. Some of you remember, may recall this plan. After review of our nine comparison divisions, the needs of our community as well as, of course, students and staff, and the Board's stated budget priority to lower class size, staff met to analyze the current plan and determine whether changes needed to be made. As a result, increases in enrollment, demographics, state regulations, and like factors, development of a new Stafford County Public Schools Staffing Standards Plan was necessary. The focus of our developmental process was to include representatives from the following stakeholders. Principals, assistant principals, teachers, parents, and division department administrators, either via electronic survey and/or meetings. Due to the fact that our HR system does not have position control, it made, of course, the process, much of the process had to be done by hand. Now, of course, within a couple of years with the new ERP system, we'll be able to generate our figures and positions much quicker. After many hours of discussion and debate, this document was first presented to the Board in the fall. At that time, the cost analysis was not included as staff wanting to be sure that the Board, there was Board support for the approach. The document is a work in progress and begins a new benchmark for our division as well as a tracking plan for how funds are used to meet the new standards. At this time, the superintendent's funding request includes meeting the goals for teaching standards in K through 5. And of course, that, this can be seen on page two. Don't worry, I'm not gonna go through all the pages. No, you're excited. The Board's discussion at the work session this past Saturday focused on lowering elementary class sizes, middle school math, in addition, secondary English classes, as well as discussion of ESL teacher needs. The Board discussed lowering class sizes and placing caps at several grade levels. The additional work required to lower class sizes by those suggested at the Board and the accompanying costs will take many manual man-hours to complete, and the reallocation make, cause costs to rise in other areas not currently impacted. We will strive to have the information necessary, of course, for Thursday's work session for discussion. This plan is a major improvement on the 2011 plan, and with the associated cost figures, it allows the Board to select where to put funds for the next year. Once these goals are met, we can move forward with new goals and lowering class sizes on a systematic basis with the aid of the new system. Next year, the staffing plan will include an additional column that shows a progress report on meeting, meeting each goal in each budget cycle. In addition, every two years, we will reevaluate, as you are reevaluating your own school board priorities. Please note that this remains a draft, and we will come to you with updates. And this Thursday, we hopefully will have your information that you're wanting for different areas. And we will give that to you. And it is a draft, and we're certainly the C in collaboration currently. And we're working on making sure and verifying certain things because so many different items come into play. And so there's a domino effect. So some of the projected costs may change, but we are verifying that and should have all of that to you on Thursday. Any questions? Yes.
Mrs. Hazard, do you remember that legal thing, inclusio, unius, exclusio, whatever? Um, I, it reminds me, I'm looking here, we specifically said the additional para position for the kindergarten will not be pulled from, you know, I wouldn't prefer shall, but will not be pulled from positions already assigned to the school. So that's in there, but that language is not in for grades one to three and four to five. So that would leave room within the schools to pull a para from somewhere else to put it in one to three and four to five. I, I doubt that that's the Board's intention. Is it? You know, we've, we've had this situation in the past where, you know, the, the numbers go up, so the school has to assign a para. So what do they do? There's no new paras being assigned to the school, so they have no choice but to take it from somewhere else. So is that, is that something the, the Board intended? It's certainly something I would prefer not to have in there. You know, I prefer any paras because of the, you know, excess in, in the, um, students in the class over our target here would come from, um, central office to, to, to assign that para. But the fact that we have it in that one place and don't have it in the other, you know, could imply that it was intended not to be there. Especially, I mean, you know, you got, you're on the same page, same point, so.
Originally, I'm sorry.
Ask the Board what, what their intention is in that regard.
Well, Mrs. Cale, was there any particular reason why that was not?
The reason.
Cause I'm, I agree with Ms. Healy.
The reason that was put in, as stated, was because at our November work session, that was discussed, and you all made a point of saying that for kindergarten. If you want to add that to the other grades, we can certainly do that. If that's the will of the Board.
Well, that, could that have a financial impact?
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
It would. Having it in kindergarten line is a financial impact.
But, but the, the other part, portion of that statement is, what is the impact gonna be on the school if they're gonna have to pull their paras to put in these classes? And what if the school doesn't even have enough paras? So you're robbing Peter to pay Paul here.
Oh, I agree with you. I just, if there's a financial impact, we need to see it. Yeah.
Something we can talk about on Thursday?
Well, I, I think conceptually, you know, we need to, we need to take a position on, on whether we want to rob the school's paras to, to put in these classes. I want smaller classes. But if I'm a principal, you know, I may need a para to help, you know, the reading specialists or, or somewhere else. So that's, I, I think that's really putting a burden on the principals as well as the staff to be potentially robbing positions. We, we discussed that in kindergarten for that exact reason. I didn't realize we were putting in the other two, or I would've brought it up then.
If we can, on Thursday, have any discussion about any of the impacts so we can adopt, so we just have a full picture of that on Thursday.
Sounds great.
With some of the other things that you're bringing along. Ms. Fallon?
I just want to say thank you for taking the time to do this. And while I know that the standards don't meet everything we'd like to say, I do really appreciate your time and Dr. Benson's insight into moving forward with our standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I stated, it was certainly a group effort, so we appreciate all of those involved. And we appreciate your willingness to try to move forward in meeting these staffing standards one by one.
Mrs. Cale, just real quick, I'm, I'm sorry that I missed your presentation on Saturday.
That's okay.
We, we talked a little bit about having reserve positions available for, for the, this very purpose. How did, how did that impact this?
And Mr. Fitzgerald, we did talk about reserve positions, and if I'm not mistaken, we talked about a total of five plus, total, basically 15? Did we talk?
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
If I could answer that. The, the reserve positions are a discussion within the context of the budget, that we're budgeting for growth. So that if we have these standards and we have a classroom that is third grade that has 26 or 28 students, one of those reserve positions would be what would be directed to, to meet our.
Okay, that's, well, that's why I asked the question, because I figured that would solve that problem. So, okay, thank you.
Of course, it won't be in the staffing standards, but please know there, there will be anomalies because we are projec, this is projections. So as we all know, projections hopefully are on target, and you never know.
So we want those reserve positions in every budget year so that we can ensure we meet these standards. And these standards don't just become a, a wonderful document sitting on a shelf. They're actually active and opened every September 1st and looked at and ensuring that we have these classrooms that are meeting our standards.
I think that one of, oh, go ahead, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Very quickly, great job by you and the team, putting this together. A lot of hard work, and for the folks that don't have it on, online, it's, you know, it's 30, 33 pages worth of, and the covers, covers down and everything. And I, and I appreciate that. And we, we did have a discussion about how, um, you know, some, I was very concerned with grades one through three, as you all know, especially, I mean, because it all goes to the max. So kindergarten would max at 20, you know, what, 24? One through three would max at 27. So that, that's kind of the hard-hitting number. You know, 24 is what we want, but 27 is what the staff would probably go, go to, to, you know, before we kick in with the extra paraprofessionals. So, you know, I'd appreciate if we do have a conversation. I know we will. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be an open dialogue, but it's a great start. And, um, you know, I just hope, I know we all want to get those, whether we step it out in years to say 20, it starts, starts at 27. I want it to start at 26, as you all know, but, and then go 25, and then 24, but that has a budget consequence. And so I, I just want to, um, say, good job, and, um, but let's, and we'll all talk about, and I'm sure, stepping it out so that we do get down to those, that, that magic number, whether it's 18 or 20 or. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
One of the greatest things about the document is kind of the next year when we see it. I know I have looked at documents, and they show this year's budget, here's what we were able to do. It's a report card to our community saying, how committed are we to these standards? What did we meet? What are we still going towards? And I think that that's just an invaluable document going forward, and it also tells our story. Here's, here's what we've done, here's how much we could fund, here's what we want to do. And I think that's gonna be a valuable, uh, document going forward. And it also relies on the data, that we said we were gonna be a data-driven, uh, board, and that's how we would present our stuff. So I'm very excited that we'll be moving towards that. So yes, one more column on there, Ms. Ms. Cale. Thank you.
And just, just one alibi, the, I don't want to poke anyone's eyes out here with this industrial strength laser pointer. It's got like skulls and crossbones on it.
Is that a new one?
That's a new one, because I lent mine, my other one, and then it went bye-bye. So.
Wasn't to me.
Yeah, okay, yeah, uh-huh. So, and, and it should be noted that this, this number right here with this 23 FTEs, that's in our current budget. So it's not, so it's not a pipe dream. We're, we're moving forward with this, and, and Dr. Benson and crew are putting it on. And so, and, and thank you so much to the Fab who's done a lot of hard work. I like to say that as well. Okay?
All right. Moving on to 10.03, adopt a resolution authorizing an application to the Virginia Public School Authority, VPSA, for the sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed 1,925,000 for the 2016 spring pool. Not pool, but.
You really have to be careful with that.
I know. So, um, this is Mr. Wolf. Any questions regarding this item?
Just a, a comment, if I may.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this, this item is necessary for the HH Pool project. Is that, is that correct? And, and that project is desperately needed at that school, so I, I will certainly be supporting this item. And it's, it's also an item that was budgeted and part of our continuation of our bond as approved by the CIP for this current year. Is that a correct statement, Mr. Wolf?
It's an anticipation, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kidby, did you want to make a motion to move this to action? They're requesting approval this evening.
Yes, I move that we take item ten point oh three to action, please.
It's been moved and seconded to move item ten point oh three from information to action. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to move it to action. Do I have a follow-on motion?
Move for approval, please.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the adoption of the resolution authorizing an application to VPSA for the sale of bonds in the amount not to exceed one point, one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for the 2016 spring pool. Any further discussion?
Please make sure that the public knows this is not for a swimming pool. This is bonds.
I know. That's what I said.
I know. It, it, it's a little misleading. These, these are bonds necessary to fix a mechanical system at HH Pool Middle School.
All we have to do is dig a hole tomorrow, and we'll have a pool.
They usually call it the burrow, the spring burrow, is what it's usually called.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to ten point oh four. This is a item to approve and discuss a resolution regarding March first, 2016. This item came to light, we had the discussion, since we and a number of school districts did decide to close, we thought that this resolution could go forward to the governor and to our elected body to request that any schools that closed in support of that, if they are in danger of not meeting their banked hours, that the, that the Commonwealth would give us a credit, not just us, but any similarly situated school if we were in danger of not meeting those. I was wondering if there was any discussion regarding that, whether we would like to make that request. I know some other school districts are also considering a similar request that we would all send those forward. Is there any?
I, I think it's a, a good idea. Kind of sets the precedent for those who haven't thought about it yet, and it lets our, our teachers and our folks know that we do value the instruction time, and, you know, we, we shouldn't have to give it away because someone's asked us to move it. So I would support it. I know Mrs. Healy has a couple of comments to make on hers, as far as, just little corrections and stuff.
Yeah, I don't know who's proofing these things, and, and let's, for the record, Mrs. Hazard did not draft this, so I have a couple grammatical errors in here I'd like to get corrected, which I can, I've just passed them to Mrs. Hazard. If you want, I can go through them.
Do you want to just go through them? And, and you can send them down to our clerk?
She's got them, yeah.
No, I, I.
Oh, no, those are hers.
Oh.
Those are hers.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I don't spend all my time proofing these documents. These things just pop up and hit me in the face when I'm reading them. Under the therefore clause, be it resolved, it says, "In recognition of the sacrifice, many school districts," plural, making, allowing its schools singular. So we should change its to theirs. Their, their schools, just to have the plural match, the plural. And then it says, "Provide a limited relief for school districts that closed on March first, 2016." And that would be, I'm sure, grammatically correct, were we adopting this after March first, 2016? But because we're adopting it in advance of March first, 2016, it, we, or either that, that closed.
That closed.
Just take the D off. It's, it's.
Right.
I don't know the technical word for the tense, but it shouldn't be past. And then we had that same change in the next paragraph, closed, changed to close, and the it sits up next to the last sentence, so.
Mrs. Healy, would you pass that to our super clerk from last?
I know, I know.
As we described her last, Ms. Super Clerk.
Yes, and, but, and, and while we're on this, I want to say, I am so happy that somebody took the time to go through that easement agreement and make the correction today. I, I thank Mrs. Euring, she had this big smile on her face, because I think she's so sick of me saying, "I'm not going to read mine in, and I'm not going to read it, and y'all got to read it, and I just handwrote it." But somebody picked up what was not corrected and made, there were two, yeah, whoever did it, I thank, because it was so nice to have it done correctly. So, thank you. I mean, that's, we're past, but that was great.
So is there any sense of the board want to move this? Move this?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Two things. One is, I would like to make that motion in a moment, but I think it'd be important for us to read the therefore clauses, so our viewing public kind of understands what we're doing here. And this is a carry-on. From the first meeting, we discussed the March first option. I think several of us spoke up to say, we need to reach out to our legislators, to the governor, to the Department of Education in some form or fashion to request some relief for this time. I think there's also going to be some carry-on conversation after this with our counterparts across the street and the registrar's office about, you know, the, just a general discussion about using schools for elections on days that school is in session. I don't know what the resolution may, of that may be, but hopefully we can find some common ground. So, other whereas clauses kind of set up the, we're taking the day off on March first to accommodate voters here in the county and other jurisdictions across the, across the Commonwealth have joined us in, in doing that, and I believe this resolution is being shared with those jurisdictions, asking them to adopt something similar. The therefore clauses are what's important here. Therefore, be it resolved in recognition of, of the sacrifice, many school districts make it in allowing their schools to be used as polling locations for the presidential primary, we request that the Commonwealth of Virginia provide a, a limited relief for school districts that close on March first, 2016. Be it further resolved, we request that Governor McAuliffe and/or the Virginia House delegates and Senate direct the Department of Education to reduce the number of required instructional hours by one day for any school district that close, that will be closed in support of the March first, 2016 presidential primary. If such school districts, if such school district is in danger of losing state educational funding under section twenty-two dot one dash ninety-eight dot two of the Code of Virginia for failure to meet the required instructional hours, and such closure for the presidential primary does not have to be made up by those school districts that have used all of its banked time. And I would move that we move this resolution to action.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All right, motion on the table is to move this action to, this item from information to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to move to action. Is there a follow-on motion?
I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second?
With edits provided to the clerk of Mrs. Healy.
Second?
And anybody else that wants to, you know, read for grammatical, I'd certainly welcome the.
That's your job.
The assistance. I know, that's why I get paid the big bucks here, right?
All right, it, it's been moved and seconded to move, to approve this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our final item before closed session, us, item ten point oh, item ten point oh five, approve consultant services for public communications. See? Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I'm asking for the permission of the board to engage services related to reviewing our communication strategies and desired outcomes, almost in the form of, of an audit, but, but to the point of providing specific recommendations as to how we might work to improve from the level of staffing to job descriptions, to key messaging, identifying new formats for communication and marketing engagement and such. And there's a detailed list of, of, of what we're looking for in terms of, of scope of services. I'm bringing it to the, to the board to ask permission to do this because it will exceed the amount that I can enter into without the board's permission, which is ten thousand dollar threshold, and it will fall then short of the maximum that I can do for these kinds of services. And, and so it will be within a range, somewhere between ten, more than ten, less than, less than thirty thousand dollars. But until I go out there and get some estimates as to what we're talking about it, I don't know where in that range, but I'm fairly confident it will be more than ten. And based upon our procurement limits, it will be less than thirty.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes?
We just heard the, another presentation on our new website and stuff, and Mrs. Cotton-Gimm talked a little bit about the rebranding. I'm assuming that this is all part of that, that whole rebranding exercise and?
It is, and this is, you know, this is an area that we, we have had concerns represented in, in a number of areas related to the, the manner in which we communicate, and sometimes it's just a, a good idea to have somebody from outside of the organization to come in and take a look at what you're doing, how you're structured, who's responsible for what, what are your standard operating procedures, you know, related to communication, both internal and external? And then, you know, help us figure out, well, maybe, what, what might, should we be doing differently in this area? So I expect some very concrete recommendations to, to, to come out, as well as products that will be helpful to us, based upon work that is underway within the area of strategic planning, the work with C five W, you know, what do our, what do our key messages need to be moving forward, how are we going to communicate them, how are we going to ensure that stakeholders are involved? So we want to look at that, that whole big picture, and we want to engage, you know, someone who's got experience doing that in divisions comparable or larger than, than we are.
This is, this is a, a great step. I've gone through a corporate rebranding, and it's, it is a big task, so look forward to having the extra help with this. Thanks.
Ms. Allen?
Would, do you have the intention of using the web-based program that we saw the presentation on tonight when they come in there? You would tell them that that's what we would be using?
Well, the tool, and, and what we're talking about here is the difference between selecting a tool to, to move our efforts forward.
Right.
As opposed to looking at the structures and strategies and how we're aligned to provide that information. So we, we need a vehicle to get that information out.
Right, I just want to make sure that when we, when you find a consultant, that that is your intention to use it.
Absolutely. And I, I've had some preliminary conversation and, and talked about, just to try and figure out, well, what might this look like? And, and part of that dialogue has been with folks that, that do this work, but also efforts that are currently underway in the, in the division, and, and how that might influence or affect any recommendations that we got from someone that we brought in to take a look at, again, how we're structured, standard operating procedures, mechanisms to ensure that we have good two-way communication.
Well, I think that this is a great time to do it, as Ms. Egan said, and with the rebranding coming out, it would be great to have a good communication and strategic plan. I know that that will go a far way in our community to really move us forward.
As indicated in this item, we can move this.
Madam Chair, I'd move to move this to action.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor of moving this, this item from information to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a follow-on?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve ten dot oh five.
Second?
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Egan or?
Madam Chairman, before you go into closed session, I just wanted to, to, to note, everybody got this handout, Walking Works 2016 Walk For Your Life. In the, the committee meeting I had last night with the Student Health Advisory Committee, Vivian Swartz from our finance office came and she gave a presentation of all kinds of activities, and this was one of them. So I asked that she send these to our clerk so we could all have them. This is not like, you know, a race, and it's not, you know, any requirement. In fact, the runners don't, aren't, runners can't even get any prizes on this one, they're sort of like outside the scope. But this is, this is simply walking, and Ms. Swartz suggested that if the board wanted to have a team, we're not walking anywhere together even, you just walk where you want to walk, and, and you'll get this pedometer, this, this, yeah, this pedometer that's been donated to the schools by Apple, and you report your steps. Now, of course, we will need a leader, Ms. Hazard, or perhaps Mrs. Kidby, because they have to calculate. They have to calc, no, they have to calculate all these steps and get our average steps, you know, every, every week. But, but I would ask that you consider doing this. I mean, it's really nothing that you normally would not do, but it's, you know, kind of gets your attention to how much you're actually walking, and I think they said a mile is about two thousand steps.
When does the program start, Ash?
It starts, I think, soon. Next Monday.
Next Monday.
So you have until Thursday, when you come back, if you want to fill this out. And Ms. Swartz even suggested that we could call ourselves the Board Walkers.
Oh, I like that.
So I, Robert, are you on a, are you on a team already? You're not on a team? Well, there you go, we could have.
No, but she's like the power walker. I'm like thinking beach.
No, 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 it's not how fast you walk, it's, it's the steps, and it's the average steps. And, and really, I mean, face it, we're not going to win, but it, we could compete. All right, you guys, I guarantee you, I'll probably walk more than most of you, because, you know, I'm at the gym every morning, but, um.
You never know.
Not on the weekends, not on the, but anyway, I, I, I would ask you to consider it, and bring it back on.
Are you zooming this in on her?
Bring it, bring it back on Thursday, and I would, would ask our clerk to join us as well.
And Mr. McCosker, there are a lot of hallways in the Pentagon that you could be walking there.
Well, he's only allowed in three.
And maybe Mrs. Kidby could calculate our averages, because we all have to report our steps per week to our team leader, and then our team leader, you know, averages them all out and then reports them to somewhere else, and.
All right, let's move us. Let's move us into closed session. Ms. Egan?
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A of the Code of Virginia, I move that Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss or consider appointment of personnel and personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at section two point two, three seven one one A, one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session.